Yes. Mayor Morris.
Mayor Morris.
I got your mind. I just stood, ain't sitting back now.
You gonna say prayer?
Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor Portman, Portman. Now. Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Welch.
Here.
Alderman Mandray.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Mayor, you do have a form.
Thank you. All to the table. On the table, make some pledges.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks everyone.
I've been taking this one time.
We'll leave this, uh, meeting underway. We don't have any special presentation or voting jury. We have a citizen's request to speak. We'll start with, uh, Ms. Sarah. Con- Conick?
Conick. Do I need to say?
Yes.
Sarah Conick, one six one zero Francis Gray. I came in to voice my concerns around number seven and the awarding of a contract potentially to branch construction, wanting to know more about the background and bidding process for that, how all the pros and cons and who helps was considered and so forth. The other thing, I have twenty-three years of my forty-seven years of business with Houston Lightning and Power Center Point. I worked hand in glove with field operations personnel for many, many years. So, my eyes, mouths arched when I read the section around emergency work. I have concerns around that, that there's not more meat provided around that, how you're going to control the expenses when you're paying overtime rates, uh, what defines emergency work, days of week, hours, who is going to define the scope when, what it truly is? Because, and my biggest concern were twenty minutes from sixty-first and forty-five. If the clock starts when they receive the call, how much are we paying for travel time? When they get here and who's going to define the scope of work and when it ends? That right there, I think, means modeling based on all of our emergency work that's going to require this past year. That's concerning because that right there can cancel out the free work that was performed in the last couple of weeks. So, that's basically my input.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next, uh, person is Caitlin.
Caitlin Wilford, one six seven one four Marina Drive. So, I spoke at last council meeting about the request to put no parking signs along the portion of Box Smith. And there was some confusion about the location of exactly where the placement of those no parking signs should be. One of the things I talked, talked about was that I thought it should begin where Pelican Way is. I've gone in to the back of Box Smith. I've gone back and looked at that. And actually, from Pelican Way to Flamingo Way, the houses between Pelican Way and Flamingo Way border and face Box Smith, so they should not be limited on the parking. But if we consider putting no parking signs from Flamingo Way back to the back of Box Smith, and there are already two no parking, uh, signs at the very end of Box Smith and one, I'm not going distance, but one past that, uh, it would be probably just need two signs. There's a couple of reasons why I think this is important. And I've had the opportunity to, to visit with a couple of y'all about this. But having been a permanent resident now, a lot of people come into our community and park along Box Smith, they cut the fence, they wade through the marsh grass, and they leave their trash out there, they have their cars out there all hours of the night, and, uh, they are basically just sitting there unattended for hours at end. And I haven't personally called the police in the past on them when they've been there very, very late at night. And one of the things David Walsh brought up was, well, we really shouldn't worry about the marsh grass because we don't have the ownership of that. That's correct. We do not have the marsh grass. But this is a fishing community and we rely on the fish and things like that. And if we have waiters going out there and continue to have more and more tourists come in to our neighborhood, it will destroy our marsh beds and it will affect our fishing and we should be concerned about that. Additionally, there's natural debris and brush that's along Box Smith. If we clear that out, we would be able to maintain the trash there and control the trash from people going by. We've had an ongoing issue about trash in the community, the birds tearing out the bags and everything. It would be easier to, to clean and maintain with our contracts that we have for the mowers. It's a good natural barrier to keep there right now to prevent people from parking. So, that's my proposal. Uh, it would not limit parking on the other side of the street. It would not limit anyone from who wants to go over there and park their golf cart and, you know, watch the sunset or sit in their car and fish with their golf cart and fish. It's no parking for vehicles that are basically left unattended, what it would be. So, that would be my proposal. I think it would help with the safety. You know, we did talk about the fact that the police need to give tickets. I actually contacted Robert, uh, I believe it was this week or last week, because there was a car parked the wrong way on Box Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next person will be, uh, Deborah Tabbett.
Deborah Tabbett, one six nine one six Beach Corner. I have a couple items, seven and ten. Let's start with positive, the dog park. I talked to Bill about this. I think it's a great idea. It's something that's needed in our community and I've talked to several of my neighbors. Hopefully, this is something we can, can move forward and hopefully utilize some high tax money for the expense of that. The second thing is the branch construction, um, contract. And, and this is not to besmirch your company in any way whatsoever, but thirty-two years of municipal government tells me that nothing is free. And I went back and looked at our check register and starting in October, we had paid branch construction almost a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm not sure, I don't know if we have a contract. You don't need to answer that. Um, I don't think we do. But it appears that a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars has been spent in four months with little to no council oversight. Um, and if that is indicative of emergency repairs, then we got bigger problems and maybe it has no work to do with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The, uh, next item on the agenda, agenda will be reports. Uh, do you find any questions of report during your practice? Does anybody have any questions for the directors of police?
I don't think the reports are available.
They're, they're available online.
Oh, okay.
They're, they're available. There would be questions from the council. Okay, uh, item number seven, uh, comments, reports from members of council. Wood, would you like to be first?
Uh, I have nothing. Thank you.
Uh, Alderman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I attended the West Galveston Island Properties Association meeting and the city held the meeting. You can see that on YouTube. I had the pleasure of talking to our state representative, Terry Leon Wilton. We're very fortunate to have her represent us in Austin. I'm keeping an eye on new legislation in Austin that will be debated and could affect our city. It's a little hobby of mine and I like to track the bills as they're presented. I quite, I find it quite fascinating to follow the process. Our Stars for Troops volunteers have been very busy. We've been collecting flags, packaging stars for our military veterans and first responders. The stars are shared as token of the city's appreciation from, to, to our first responders. And the remaining stripes from the flags are retired with honor. Our volunteers take stars with them whenever they travel and we've reached all corners of this nation and around the world. If you want to donate a flag, please be sure that they're made in the USA and have embroidered stars. You can drop them off at City Hall or contact me. If you'd like to become a volunteer, you can call City Hall and they'll give you my phone number. Um, Chief Garvey, I hope that while you're meeting, um, some of these people, that you're also giving stars to them. That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
In the past few weeks, I've talked with so many of the wonderful and kind people to make a beach. We really do live in the best little village in Texas. I also, um, want to let you know that there is a grand reopening of the Galveston Island State Park. It's where the Vantage Beach is. That's March thirty-first. There's a, at ten AM. There's a welcome, a presentation of colors, acknowledgements, ribbon cutting, and interpretive program. Um, so that's going to be a really big deal. I talked to the, um, director of the state parks today and, um, she let me know that that everyone is, it's a public event and everyone's invited. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Jones?
Yeah, I have only one report to make. I've been, uh, been working with Robert and trying to quantify where we are on the water system and try to get a feel for if we do have leakage and face of water and what's causing it, where it is. Robert's got a map that's been produced by an engineer, I think. And we're going to get that printed out and we're going to try to quantify where we are and start trying to figure out from statistical and actually standard, do we have, do we, do we not have leakage? One of the things, we just got a new water meter. Is that correct? So, my thinking is that they're monitoring this water meter just like we monitor a resident's water meter, right?
Yes.
My thinking, Robert, is that if we come in and find out what's happening between, say, two and four o'clock in the morning, when there's not a lot of usage, if we, if we start, um, monitoring that and seeing where we're at, will give us a better, what type of leakage we really have. It's just one of my thoughts. And that's the reason for this map. How much we installed, how much more we got to go, and just a picture of where it's going. That's it. Thank you.
Alderman Jones? Thank you, Senator. First things first, uh, we have some folks here who've been working on the beautification of Jamaica Beach. They are, would you please stand up, please?
Good job.
Please. You know, I, because I very literally tend to embarrass you all.
Good job.
And you've all done wonderful things and we as a city are very proud. Second item, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, I said it last meeting, I'll say it again. I would like us to go to a twice a month meeting rhythm. Uh, these, this is too much to take in in one meeting. And I also like to have a time between discussion and vote. I want to have a few, a couple of weeks to absorb what's to discuss and figure out where I really stand and not have to vote today, but rather know that my vote has been carefully considered. Uh, another item I would like to see us, uh, try, Mr. Mayor, is, uh, is around the items of citizen input. And I think that maybe once a month, we could have a town hall where there's no formal agenda and we just take input from citizens. Uh, I, you know, I, I share this coming about y'all's frustrations about not getting heard on topics that are not on the agenda, but this is a business meeting. We have, if we took all the concerns, these meetings would drag on to, and, uh, to the end of the night. And, uh, finally, one general comment, this, this makes me sad, is that our little village is, is divided now as it's been since, uh, Woody and Dick and Mr. Speisen ran for council when our, uh, pre, when that administration was, basically being working. This city ought to have done for them. But it appears that we have come to that again, you know, some twenty-two, twenty-three years later. And, and it makes me very sad and it seems that this division, there is one person that's ever seen. Alderman Jones, I have him. I'm very disappointed with you. You are reckless.
This, this is not right. Uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. This is not right.
Am I out of order?
Yep.
Yes.
How am I out of order?
His, his, um, his order is important.
I have my right to make my comments and you have been.
We don't.
And it's caused our city.
Order, please.
It's caused our city to divide even further. And it, it's just not right.
Wow.
And, uh.
I'm doing this, I can't.
I wanted to say more, but, or.
It's not right.
But it's, it's just not right.
You're not right.
Just because you have the right to do something doesn't make it correct.
You're not right.
What you're saying, what now?
Thank you. Uh, next item for, uh, for business consent agenda and approval amendments. Uh, the following items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion for these items unless the council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Any other discussion? Do you think these two items? I have a motion to approve as one.
I'll make that motion to approve as a minute.
No, a second.
A second.
May we make a vote, please? All in favor? Next item, number nine is our new business. Uh, item number one is discussion, consideration, and possible, possibly take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero five, amending ordinances twenty twenty-three dash one, section D. Mr. Roth, would you like?
Sure. This is, uh, this is the amendment that passed last month and promised, you promised Alderman, uh, Jones that when he come back, uh, and have amended to where Taylor's mirrors the city of Galveston's, uh, work for work.
Any discussion? Can you ready to vote? All in favor? I'm sorry, do it. Motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero five, amending ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, section D. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Discussion, consideration, and possibly take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero six, repealing ordinance number tw- two thousand one dash zero three, link realignment of council positions by allowing the mayor's term to be for one year. It's not what it sounds, but we'll let Mr. Quintero.
Uh, we're cleaning up old ordinances and this one has, uh, need to be sunsetted because this was, uh, an unexpired term of a former mayor and this is put in for a special election for an expired term. Now it's time to remove it.
Come again?
This is an old ordinance from the year two thousand and one that was passed to have a special election for an unexpired term for mayor for one year. And we be carrying it in the books. We're asking it to sunset and it expires.
Okay.
You just taking it off the book.
Correct. We're just sunsetting that ordinance.
Correct.
And replacing it with.
Nothing.
Replacing it with an ord- replacing it with nothing?
With nothing. It doesn't need to be, it was a one-year, uh, election term and it's been, it's twenty-two years old and never yet. Correct. After that one election.
Okay. I just want to make sure, but I'm voting for you. Do I motion to, uh, vote for that? Um, motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six, repealing ordinance number twenty oh one oh three, realignment of council positions by allowing the mayor's term to be for one year. A second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Thank you. Next item, my discussion, consideration, possibly take action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, to establish a dead tree, diseased trees, and dead palm tree branches, rules and regulations. Uh, Mr. Quintero, do you want to?
You know, sort of, sort of need, you ride around town, you, uh, I had Tom just go down Buccaneer and then Bob Smith, we counted a hundred and thirty-five trees, just, just riding back and forth against the plants. Um, it's, uh, I visited with J. Gonzalez from JBIC, he is on the beautification chair and he supports this and, uh, I believe staff is asking me all the passes, this ordinance.
Yeah, we've, we've had, uh, several issues where trees have fallen, fallen on other people's property, damaged it, uh, power lines, and we just need to get something with some heat, heat. And, uh.
Is there a time limit? Are you going to run it for a year or?
It's in your, it's in your back, you know, on the ordinance.
I haven't read it. I was just asking.
Sorry? Yes, you can be, we're filing. Uh, we just go back to it.
Just tell me when I got to train my palms again.
Do you agree that one is first?
I know, but I mean, from the time of the, the tree dying, how long do the residents have to be?
Well, once they're notified, once they're notified, there's a time limit to go down.
But it's, it's a long.
So, how long after note? Now, looking at this, it's, I mean, it's mostly clear, but I want to be sure at the end. So, if David Welch has a sloppy dying palm and he gets a notice from the city, how long does he have to be?
Run. Upon, uh, notification, you have thirty days. Okay.
So, that's.
Or shall have most of thirty days after notify the cut off since it has been removed. He'll have fifteen days from the day of service of notice.
So, is that based on the postmark on the envelope?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be mailed to somebody now.
All right.
Clean it up, Dave.
Yeah, it is. It, it's, it's not like it's something that it is, there's going to be some flexibility.
We're not going to have the tanned dog.
Yeah. It's, it's just something with some teeth that makes it.
And then, uh, what annual, requiring us to annually remove our dead bronze?
That would be the nice thing.
Twice, twice a year.
Is that, is that in here? I thought I read that in there.
No. That's, that's, that's actually not what I'm asking.
Section two. It's, so section two has no teeth, but you're just asking folks to, uh, to prune yearly so we keep the tree rashes and roaches down.
Correct.
Yeah, and I'd do it to do it when we, right before the trash day.
Yeah. Who's going to make the assumption? And I got too many roaches. Things like that are really difficult.
Yeah, but we get, we get complaints.
I'm just saying, I, I'm very bothered. There's some of this stuff silly.
Yeah, we get complaints from, uh.
I think the dead tree part's good.
Yeah.
But beyond that.
Well, like I said, we get complaints of people leaving stuff just out in their yard, that there's roaches, rats, and stuff like that.
There are, there are months and months.
So, there's really no difference.
The state park won't trim any of them. They say if anything falls down, it's, it's going back to the earth. So, I mean, you get into, into your, you know, it's, there's all, all kinds of different viewpoints on that.
This is a roach gear.
You know, a- a- actually, you know, if.
We got a roach gear.
If you pull them, if, as I say, you pull the top of it out and it comes all the way out, it's dead. I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, I, I like the, the, the thing about the dead trees, but beyond that, how in the world would you really?
Well, there is, there is no notice with the, with the, uh, dead palm branches. It's just saying, hey, guys, this is what we should be doing.
It says should be pruned yearly.
Yeah, it says should be.
So, that hasn't actually had any teeth.
Correct. Not like government.
Stay away from my palm.
That's like a government deal.
And who decides that it's a dead palm? Uh, uh.
Tom.
Are, it's, are.
Of course.
Of course. Okay.
Yeah, like I said, it's very simple. It's cool. I'll go down. It's dead. But, you know, actually, you know, you can drop around.
It says for us, too. It says trees are safe.
Correct.
So, you know, if, if somebody's bush dies, the guy can, you really will get, I think the palm trees, you know, we do have a problem with palm trees. They die in disease that should be removed, but.
As should any bush that's been sitting dead for six, eight months.
Okay, with more. You wouldn't, wow, we're going to have to spend, this is one of these times, we don't have time to think about it up there.
Why would it turn on our bush again?
It is good, I agree with that.
Why, instead of doing an ordinance, why can't we put an annual thing out to remind people to, to clean up their dead trees?
We do do that.
We have, there is before, before the big trash pickup days, uh, the, the annual one, but, uh, this actually puts teeth in the, this makes people a bit more excited for the tree a little bit. Good, we get rid of it. It has up to a hundred dollar fine for it.
Yeah, I agree with this in spirit. This is not worded in a way that's.
If water bad, where all these people taking their.
Should we go ahead and just call for the, the shelf it to?
You know, think about it a little bit more and get, get it really meaningful. I mean, helping.
No, 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 I understand. I understand.
What does it do to the palm trees that people have carved out and relaxed and, you know, that's a dead tree.
Decorated ones, yeah.
Decorated ones.
Yeah, I think they're, they're pretty, but it's, it's.
That's art. That's not a dead tree.
That would be one thing, we should put a, a height limit.
All of this is telling me.
It needs to be thought out.
All this is telling me is that we should table this until, until.
Can I, do you have a table? Can, can visit me and we'll, we'll. Get your concerns in here.
Motion to table.
Motion, motion to table.
Second? All in favor? All right. Next item is discuss, discussion and consideration and possibly, possibly take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero two, designating Robert M. Quintero to apply for a grant for car cam cameras for the police department.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Yeah, this is, uh, through the offices of the governor, uh, Criminal Justice Division. Uh, this will assist the police officers if they're in pursuit of somebody, somebody throws out something on the car and/or if they have, uh, they may have somebody in their back of their car to give them, give this very nice protection.
Any questions? No, this is overdue. Uh, this is one, this is one of those things that keeps.
Now, let's explain to you, the grant has already been submitted. Got officer, uh, CJD office knows that it takes time for councils to ratify or approve resolutions.
Correct.
So, you can submit it and then submit your resolution. So, it's already, the grant is already there.
So, I have a motion to approve, to discuss, and then consideration, possibly take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero two, designating Robert M. Quintero to apply for a grant for car cam cameras for the police department. Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two, designating Robert M. Quintero to apply for a grant for car cam cameras for the police department. A second?
Second.
All in favor? So, discussion, consideration, possibly take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero three, approving the annual Galveston County mosquito control district contract for aerial spraying for mosquitoes.
That's my favorite. This is actually standard operating procedure that you've got every year, every year. If we don't do it, shame on us. Yeah, that would be consensus.
All right, what is the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Shall we read it?
Read it.
Can I read it, good? All in favor? Discussion, next item number six, discussion, consideration and possibly take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero-four, approving an interlocal agreement with TIPS Purchasing Cooperative. Mr. Quintero, we can.
TIPS is a, is a, it's, they're fast to receive, it's a co-op, purchasing co-op. Uh, we use this system, the city can actually receive money back from them, as, because the contractors use them as a source, and if we ever, in the future, we need to build on projects, they will help, they will set the bids for us without us having to go any further, they'll get the bids coming in when we're purchasing equipment and/or services for contractors. And it's similar to HJC Buy.
Right, do we have to buy to justify something like this?
Um, yes, no, maybe, uh, but it's there, it's available, it's at no cost to the city.
I've never seen one of these that didn't wind up costing you money.
Well, HJC does it, and I've been real familiar with it.
I've said, I've, I've been involved with them before, up in Oklahoma, and it was, it was awesome.
Yeah.
It's awesome, but I don't know, I've forgotten, bottom line, I would mean.
I'd say, it was a co-op, and it was great.
Bottom line. And how much, you know, how much volume?
We, we don't have the volume right now, but if we go, I mean, if we ever need it, it's available to us. It's at no cost to the city.
Right, it's at no cost, but we do get our.
It's zero cost, I, I, well, I said to the media, they'll ask three times, are you sure it's no cost? And she said, it's no cost to join this co-op. They make their money from the contractors and/or vendors who sell goods and services.
All that has to be relevant to the cost of products sooner or later, it's nothing.
Well, I'll tell you what, the, 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 the actual contractors, they pay to belong.
Yeah, I think they get quantity prices.
No.
That, that's the deal.
No, it's not, it's part of it.
What kind of things are you looking to buy from them?
At this moment, nothing right now.
Nothing?
Nothing right now.
What would you buy?
Trash services, we can.
Yeah, I, I, what I was looking at is, if we bid out our, our trash services again, they will set the bids for us.
Water, nothing, they'll bid out trash and water.
No, any, or, or product.
Yeah.
It's a, it's like a co-op. Yeah.
It is a co-op.
And it doesn't cost the city anything, but we can always check in if we do.
Well, yeah, that's, if, if we don't like what they come up with, we can go out and bid ourselves.
Well, could we try this for a year and come back to it in a year and see how it's.
We may not, we may not use it in a year, so, yeah, you could do that. We're not obligated to use it.
No.
You know, if we buy our, we buy our, our office supplies from Office Depot, we're happy with it, we continue to use, you know, Office Depot all our own.
We're small, we don't have a few things that we become skilled at bidding out, services. I'm, I'm more in favor of direct contracts.
But you're saying if you, if they come up with someone and you don't like it, we're not obligated.
No, not obligated to use them.
Not at all.
But they're just another, another function, another function to get more people, get different.
Honestly, I'm down there too, but I've seen this in the past, and they're structured in the contract.
No, no, that's not true, you make several separate segments, yes, I don't know what you're talking about.
The, the, the contractor does, it is, it is something that's with a big process.
So, I'll ask this question, and I, you know, I come, I'm a kid from the sticks, right? Uh, when I grew up, we had farmers' cooperatives, and we'd all go to the co-op and buy our gasoline. They didn't charge us any more than anybody else, they, you know, we bought our, our seed and our fertilizer and everything else from the co-op, and at the end of the year, the co-op members would get cash back from the co-op based upon the volume discounts that they got for the fertilizer, gasoline, diesel, whatever. Is this how that works? There, there's no cash back?
No, 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 we do get a cash back, we, we, we get back, if we use their system and we contract with one of their vendors, we will get a cash, uh, rebate.
So, not exactly like that, that's something close, all right? No, but, but we, it's a win-win for the city with everything, even though it, it's goods and services, whatever, whatever it shall be, vendors, uh, um, contracting help, there, there's lots of different additives that they provide.
And there's also no penalty for getting out of it, so if we try it and wanna get out of it, we just say we.
Right, we don't, we don't.
No, we don't have to get out of it.
Yeah.
Pardon? I'm sorry?
I don't think we'll be getting out of it, I mean, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah. It's not, it's fine, it's, we're not, we're not committed to, we're not committed to using it.
It's like getting your sisters, what you're saying.
Um, no, I'm saying, we're trying to save this city some money.
I'm just, I did not have that expertise, I'm, I'm gonna be quiet, I don't, perhaps, I think there's a couple of people I'm looking at that probably do, I don't. So, yeah, it sounds like a six, uh, it just, this, anytime we're gonna catch back and somehow this, these things have to be rolled into the cause someplace, that's all. And I don't have.
I, I'll use, I'll use the experience that I have, and this is not with this co-op, and I was out of, uh, HJC Buy, and there was no, he didn't, he didn't have to be, uh, pay any fees for it, and they would get the bids for it. We had to buy several vans at one time, and they got the best prices for us, for those vans, 'cause they contracted with the vendors to be in there, and where I was, we bought, like, it was like six vans, and, uh, best price we could get. This is what this co-op still did, and I'm not saying we'll all buy vans, I'm just saying it's an option. It's just an option, you know, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give you the worst case scenario, I'm gonna give you the worst, worst case scenario. What if we have a, a hurricane, and we need to behave us, okay? This will, this will help us in the process, and we're gonna have to bid out, because we could go right to them, and they would already have the bids, in case it works.
Well, is there a website that I can go look?
Sure, it's tips, uh, I'll give it to you.
I went and looked at one website, and I'm not sure that I looked at the right one now, 'cause they were talking about office equipment and playground and all.
They have it all.
Yeah, they got everything.
Yeah, everything.
I guess I, I, I'm not, I'd like to just have a lot more information about this.
We could, she asked, actually said she would come over here and address these questions that, that you had.
Well, then, maybe that would be a good idea.
Go on.
We just ready to table that one? Motion to table.
Okay, table over.
Item number seven.
We have to take my vote right now?
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor? The table? Thank you. Number seven, discussion, consideration, and possibly take action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero-five, authorizing the mayor to approve a maintenance contract between the city of Jamaica Beach and Branch Construction LLC for professional service to operate the water and wastewater operations.
Uh, staff recommends that we contract for that, uh, construction, administer the wastewater treatment plant and water services, background in, uh, Jamaica Beach, publishing RFP for this services. Two applicants will return on time, the RFP was opened and evaluated by staff and our engineers with merchant associates. After some deliberation, the RFP was scored, branch construction had the highest score. Difference in pricing, USW came in at twelve thousand two hundred and ninety dollars per month. Branch Construction came in with a bid of twenty-three thousand six hundred a month with a fifteen thousand dollar worth of free services that will go against, uh, that they will give us, okay? Uh, and bring it to overall average total is gonna be eighty-six hundred dollars a month. Uh, they will provide, they, they will provide us with one employee for eight hours, uh, a day, all, for five days a week. We, and they are here in the audience, if y'all wanna ask them quick.
Yeah, I do, come on, no offense. For each concern.
Good evening, first, I'd just like to introduce the guys, I'm Sean Ashworth, and I'm one of the principals at Branch Construction. JW Gordon, he as well is the principal of the company, okay? Dan Hudson, I spent, we've spent quite a bit of time down here already with the city over the last several months. So Dan actually lives on the island and is in near proximity, and he's been down here practically on a daily basis, learning, knowing the city, and really understanding the needs, and then also executing work for the city as well. And then Leroy Thomas, he is someone that, he is a expert in the operation of the sewer and the water plant, all the certification, all the state-based testing and all that happens. So you all probably know right now, I guess for some time now, there has been an entity in here that has done the testing and the such, and that they did not really have the ability to do the modifications, which would include emergency work, regular point repair, leaks and the such, and then rehabilitation work to help rebuild the city and make the infrastructure system better. So they really used a subcontractor to come and do that, and what I do know is that that was not very timely, there was a lot of times where, you know, it was two or three weeks before leaks were addressed and things like that, so we are one entity, one company that operate there. We would have someone at the plants that would be there on a regular basis to care for it, okay? And they would do all the testing, all the state reporting, all that's required there. Also have their eyes on all the equipment, we have a regular maintenance program where we will maintain and inspect really daily, okay? And then the city itself, and I think Robert spoke to that, we have a in-house person, it's a very qualified person, that he is the one that's already been down here for the last few weeks, okay? He understands the city, he's seen it, he would be the one that would be the eyes on the ground, and he would daily be walking lines, you know, doing all those things, flushing the firewater system, doing all those things to really bring operational integrity to the city.
Yeah, and I can say this, we've been working with them for months, uh, Mayor Rattell, Robertus, and myself and Robert, we have went through this city, we have had so many meetings with these guys, and we appreciate the time that they, they've put in and invested in helping us and get this out of some problems that we were, we were in and struggling with, they've done great.
You were here when, when Sarah had some concerns, I mean, uh, about overtime and stuff like that, can you address any of that?
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me speak to that really quick, okay, because the, in keeping an eye on the city, let, let me just say that we are, we have a lot of clients that are very similar to you guys, okay? We like working with the municipalities or a lot of our clients, and we actually have a personal relationship with those people. So for us, we are relational, we have people there, and you have my and JW's personal assurance that we have been and we will be there for you when you have a problem. The other side of that is, we will be ongoing, inspecting, working with the city within budget, okay, to increase and improve the infrastructure of the city. One thing that was said about TIPS, uh, is that one, a couple of the real values of having TIPS is, one, those rates that are used in TIPS, one of the purposes of using it is that it keeps the city completely in compliance. So in other words, our rates, the ones that you get, are the exact same rates that we use for every other municipality, and a lot of our clients, just like you, they use TIPS because then they're able to afford the work, they have the full confidence that the pricing, okay, is within state compliance. So, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to send out three or four bids, you don't have to, the city doesn't have to accept the responsibility of making sure that the rates are in compliance. We do what's called RS means, which is a government-accepted calculation on every single job we do, and we're perfectly transparent that those calculations are always at your disposal. So the rates we use are always going to be state-compliant and keep you in compliance, and the other side of that is, my experience has been down here, that our rates are actually, uh, substantial, well, I know they're a lot less than what the city had been paying previously for contract work. Part of that is that Dan's right down the island, and we have a good-sized base of operation in Dickinson, so we can be here quickly, and I know that in the past, a lot of those folks were coming from Cyprus and a lot farther to take care of the city.
Dan, how long, how long were you in Galveston water?
Uh, thirteen years.
Thirteen years, and he knows a lot about the water and water systems and, and.
And he lives here.
Eight miles down the road in Camp Beach Estates, I live down the road, so. During Christmas, I was down here, Christmas Day, I was at Russell's house. Christmas Eve, I was at Russell's house, shutting water off, turning water off. I was in this neighborhood the whole, the whole holiday, so, and the chief's got my number, and somebody had a problem just last weekend, they ca- he gave it to him, they called me, I was out here, I fixed their, their problem.
And we thank you for spending your holiday with us.
And, uh, something I wanted to address, though, she said that we've spent, is this Susan? Was that right?
Excuse me.
Sarah, Sarah, I'm sorry.
I'm Sarah, this is Sarah.
Oh.
You were talking about money, you mentioned the money.
Yeah, you mentioned the money. Anyways, she said nothing's for free, but there is certain things we can do, and then we have done, that helps out here in the city. The drainage canal, we cleaned that out for you, I mean, you never got a bill for that. The sewer treatment plant, all that debris that was just dumped on you guys, I don't know where it came from, but we straightened it out, I think you've seen that, didn't you? And we even planted grass out there, you never got a bill for that.
Are you gonna make keeps and maintaining that and keep?
That's part of the contract, is to mow that grass.
Is that in your contract?
Yes.
Yes.
Where is that in here?
All maintenance of all facilities.
Is, is this the contract? What, what we have here, is that the contract?
It's the agreement.
The agreement.
And the final thing I wanted to say was, the concrete back here in the back of the city hall, I don't know if anybody's noticed it, but
Yeah.
that was, that was, uh, something Robert come up with, and the mayor, and myself, and I said, hey, you guys supply the material and we'll, we'll do the layer.
So is that what the, um, private-public agreement is about?
Correct.
So is that separate from this?
We're, we're not in this yet.
We're not in this.
We're not in this.
Well, when, um, it says here, Mar- Mary Morris lines a public-private partnership with Branch Construction Group, so is, is this different than this?
Well, this is just a one-time, one-time thing, this is, this is just a one-time.
This is just a one-time.
One-time thing, yeah.
Okay, and.
They did us a favor, just like they've done with the drainage ditch, turning all and off the water all through the holiday.
But they're gonna continue doing these favors?
That's the way. That's the way I operate.
Okay, and, and that's in your, and, and that's, and that's in, in this contract?
They're not about favors, but it shows.
We just tried to apply, we just tried to use a lot.
We're not trying to complicate this, it was very simple, I asked them to do a favor, and they did it.
You pay for, you pay for the material, we pay for the.
Yes, we don't need to complicate it anymore than.
That's all it was. Hey, if I buy the materials, will you guys dig it up and, and get it ready for the concrete?
I think we just tried to apply logic and common sense, there's some times, or if we can do something and we're on site that benefits the city, we're fine with that.
Right.
There'll be other times where we might bump up against some stuff that's more difficult than we expected, I mean, most of our work every day is like un. I mean, most of our work every day is like unknown work because it's underground. So you don't really know what you have until you know what you have.
Um, your mayor, Pro Tim Russell, uh, he asked me, right there in front of his house on Jolly Roger, I guess the gas company, tore up some sidewalks, put in gas lines or something, says they've been trying to get it fixed forever. He said, hey, I'm pouring that concrete, I'll come over there. I don't know if anybody's noticed the sidewalk's fixed, but we poured the sidewalk.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
Thank you guys for that.
It was just only in front of the.
I, I actually, I actually didn't do it to Russell's satisfaction, he made me go over and rip it out. Big section of it, we did it. You know, it's, I wanted to do it right too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good deal.
Yeah, I want you guys to stay here. I'm a construction man. I come up through the speed. Okay, I went to school at night to get my engineering degree. I know exactly what you're saying. What I'm gonna say is we're directed to Robert. I think you guys have got an excellent company, I think you're strong. I think you can do exactly what you say you can do. I'm impressed. Robert, this is to you. We went out with a request for a proposal, okay? I can't vote on this because I have no justification and I have no recommendation from you. You've got other bids, other bidders. I expected, I expected you to have a spreadsheet. We've evaluated these bids and a recommendation on who you wanted to award this contract to or our mayor to award the contract to and why this is the best for the city. And that's all I'm gonna say. I opened up this session as far as the sales, about having that spreadsheet and seeing the numbers and you saying it's actually in writing, not verbally, so we have time to review it.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Did we, yeah, you, you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hang on, let me glue this address uh, real quick. We've covered some things in the last meeting.
I opened this up, this section of the agenda of saying staff recommendations, that is my recommendation. We had our engineers that, that reviewed the RFPs.
So where's the spreadsheet and where's his comments and who's the best and why? You proved somehow you're valid, so and why?
Did, did we not meet on this last meeting?
Yeah, we, we actually met on, we actually all approved allowing us to go into contract negotiation with this company.
With this company?
Not award, we said.
To go into contract negotiations?
With this company, not, not anybody else. And that was, I think, in both unanimously.
Right.
So this is what we did.
Funny, but I can't, I can't con-, look. I'd never be doing my job if I did not say what I'm saying. It'd be a disservice to this city.
And we went through the bidding process, did we not, guys?
We did. So where, where is the spreadsheet?
Okay, yeah, we've approved as city council, the funding for that.
Funding for that?
Yes, funding for that. No, no.
The board has to be based on.
Okay, we, we gave the okay to go into contract negotiations with them last meeting, you know? You voted on it and you approved it.
Negotiation's done, negotiate and come back to it.
And that's what he's doing right now, that's what he's doing right now. We're trying to approve it.
I can't vote.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, my question is about monthly fee and the fifteen thousand dollars.
Credit.
Uh, credit promised. Uh, you know, I'm a consultant, maybe fixed bid work like that all, not all the time, but we do all the structured. A lot of our fixed bid work like that, um, you know, it would be, I, I'm, I'm, I don't mean to disrespect you gentlemen. I just, I just, I just don't quite feel all the way comfortable with it and for the first year, absolutely. You're gonna, you're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be going over your fifteen thousand. What is the duration of this contract? Is it one year?
Now you're talking the contract itself.
Yeah, so the duration of the contract is one year. Uh, the first year we'll never have to worry about whether it's fifteen thousand.
And then we renegotiate.
It's in effect for one year and will remain in force thereafter with automatic annual renewal.
Thank you.
But a renewal date, in other words, we can't award, we, we have to have the money appropriated in the, in the budget, right? Before we can enter a contract. So it would have to be a renewal date to work with a budget, right?
Correct, and that's what it's there.
So this time, whatever we're reaching, would you go until what, September of this year?
No, it'd be until. It'd be, could we tell March first next year?
Yeah.
Then can we reevaluate on March first of next year?
Whether we're down to September or this year?
Then we need to.
Wait, no, no, just one, one percent, no.
I mean, hello.
Yeah, please, later.
We, we work off the fiscal budget. So even though this sets for one year, maybe we need to work with them up until the budget and then renew it then at budget time and start the contracts from then on.
Yeah, but they're only, they'll be on the budget date because it would be appropriated for them.
We, we will, have we not budgeted this money already?
Yes. It's budgeted for what?
Well, we've.
For September what?
We've put the money from the budget, which they're under.
And where is, what line item is this being paid from?
Uh.
Waste water treatment.
Yeah, I'm sorry, they're still in the line. You've had.
There's two different ones?
Operations.
I mean, we were done with the same thing with, with USW, we paid them a set amount every month that were in there. And then we paid anywhere from four to eight thousand extra a month for work orders that they were doing, so.
And we just, we, we just tried to put something together that made sense on this.
It's a good, a good sale.
Now, we, that was to help the city. So, you know, our intent is that, at work with you guys, have a long-term, sustainable relationship.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. We just need, we're trying to, to, to do our due diligence here.
Sure, sure.
Uh, Sarah brought up about emergencies and that isn't in, isn't in here. Now, if there's an emergency, maybe, what is the procedure for that?
For emergencies as in for water leaks, this is just the maintenance of your wastewater treatment plants.
Okay.
So anything outside of your plants, like if the street or water main blows, that's on, that's not even in the contract.
That's not.
It's just.
So what, if there's an emergency at the wastewater plant?
Then we would be there.
Okay, but.
As they have been for the last four, five months.
And that fifteen thousand can be applied every month towards any job. So whether it's an emergency, it's regular, it's rehabilitation work. You want to apply it towards the rehabilitation work that might need to be done.
Streets, drainage, water, sewer, whatever falls in, into our wheelhouse, which is where they're. Putting up fence for your proposed dog park out there by the treehouse plant?
See, I'm, I'm not bending, losing a dollar this, this, these meetings and so, I, I like hearing this because I haven't been told who's been doing that work.
And what we can do, you know, bring ballots each month of, to the fifteen thousand, and report to you what we're giving you for that fifteen thousand.
And you'll report to us, to council, what we're getting for that?
Sure. They're pretty good on, when we do the work orders and things like that. Until giving me an estimate and what's gonna be, and we'll use that first fifteen thousand on that.
Did you include that in the agenda packet so everyone can see that? Great.
You, you get me? I will let you take care of it.
Hey, if I could just say, listen, we are big on being transparent. So part of our, of work going forward would be to have a work order system that the city has complete, you know, they can see exactly what's going on. We're having to send back job calculations on each job. That's just the way we operate. And we actually, the infrastructure side of it, the work order side, will be a lot more organized and it will be intentional. It won't be, you know, pencil footprint paper and that sort of thing.
We've been really trying to get that system up and going since they've been working for us.
We need this for all kinds of.
Yeah, exactly. We've been trying to put this together for years.
We want a partner for the long term with you guys.
My, my question was, was answered about, and thank you for going into more detail that that fifteen thousand was not just for wastewater. We can use it to, it's a sidewalk.
You got a pothole in your street you wanna fix, Robert tells me, I'm gonna go fix it, then fifteen grand I'll go toward you. I mean, it's just.
We just figured that was a reasonable number based on past performance.
And we have that, that money covered in, in the, um, in, in the budget?
It's actually, right now, we're over in waterline repairs. Every time I turn around, there's another break. Once this all levels out, you're gonna see where it's actually less a month than what we've been paying our previous s-, uh, maintenance company or whatever used it. So they're gonna actually be less, I think.
Yeah.
You know?
The response time is, can be, uh, you know, our last contract can take a couple of days to get out of here because they're, they're in sin cruise from.
And they had to submit out to additional, yeah, contractor, to additional contractor, to.
And this is all in-house, in-house, West Side Shop.
Yeah.
For, for, for.
Once, once we're ready there, the water pressure, all this ADS and this.
Play just two really quick points for some minutes. We will, I mean, the integrity of the piping system that we found in the sys-, the city, you know, it, it's, it's been, it's substandard, whoever put it in. Let me just assure you all and, and, you know, the city that like, and you know from our past work, we don't put substandard components in the ground, okay? We do the job right and we wanna make sure the right thickness of the pipe that over time, I mean, you have to start somewhere, right? So you start somewhere and you build a highly, uh, a high-integrity system and it will happen overnight. But, you know, let it stay at it and, you know, we're happy to work with the, you know, budget, whatever we can do to help to make that happen. So one, building a more sustainable system. And the other one is, is we have a very prescribed uh, matrix, Gantt chart of what we deliver. So you can look at that and you will get a report back on a regular basis, which I suspect you were not getting any of that in the past, okay? That the work was actually done, okay? So it's going to be done. There's a lot of faulty valves in the city, there's a lot of problems there, but over time, it will get better and better over time.
Yeah, I mean, our system is, is thirty, forty, fifty years old.
Yeah.
Uh, depending on what section you live on in and when it was developed, uh.
Most of the fifty.
Yeah, most of the fifty and that's way beyond life expectancy of infrastructure.
And the repair clamps and some of the installation that we've seen today is definitely in substandard. So we don't do it that way and we don't put that stuff in the ground.
Are you saying that, are you saying that recent, um, repairs have been substandard?
Like some of the repair clamps in the, like, are the lowest, cheapest ones you could buy.
Actually, Councilman Jones, that leak that was right behind your house, that was repaired by the other company last year, was it? And they, it broke again because they use clamps that you go to Home Depot and you buy in their plastic. We can go, I can take you right downstairs right now and show you the clamps that I just purchased on Friday, the company did, and they're downstairs waiting to be used on your system. And they're not plastic. They're some of the highest grades, bromat couplings you, you can buy right now. And it's made, they're made to fit this odd ball-sized pipe you have on it. It's, your pipes are.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I experienced this. My water was on and off for a week.
Yeah.
So I, I get it.
So, I'm just letting you know that the parts we're putting in the ground, you know, they're downstairs right now.
Okay, guys, thank you, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, then we, uh, approve a maintenance contract when the city wants to make a new branch and structure that all. For first, professional services to operate, water and wastewater operating.
Seven. All in favor?
I'm not in favor.
So you're saying?
Uh, I respect Branch and I respect, can I speak?
No, that was a vote, I'm not gonna speak.
I can't say why. You're gonna throw me out of the meeting? I can't because I did not get a justification and a recommendation that we can see what the other bidders propose, period. Thank you.
So are you abstaining or are you saying no?
I'm saying no.
Next item will be discussion, consideration. If we possibly take action, we change the waiting period on new hires for health care insurance benefits with T- Texas Municipal League.
Okay, basically, I put a letter in your packet so you would kinda understand what they're saying. A new hire now, we have a waiting period of ninety days before they're eligible for health benefits.
That's true.
Okay? If that employee started on the fifteenth of the month, for instance, they were given us the half of the month and no charge. They're not gonna do that anymore. They're allowing us to change our, I guess you'd say your waiting period. You can put them on effective immediately or you can put them on sixty days after their enrollment date or I think it's thirty days after their enrollment date. So I've brought it to council, so y'all decide if y'all want, because we're gonna, if we leave it the way it is now at ninety days and they start in the middle of the month, they're gonna charge us for the remainder of the month. So, but they're gonna basically back it up and charge for the full month even though they're not getting their benefits, is what I'm trying to say, so.
And what is the, uh, your, how do you feel?
I mean, that's up to y'all. I know last, I think, at one time, Ottoman Mader brought up, he thought, put them on immediately, but, I mean, that, it just depends. You wanna put them on, they're giving you the option. Leave it like it is, pay, pay them for the month if they don't get insured.
Debbie, what are your recommendations?
That's really not my, I mean, if you put them on immediately, you pay benefits immediately. If you wait the sixty days or the thirty days, at least you have, you don't pay that insurance. So it's, it really depends if you wanna start paying the benefits immediately or you wanna still continue to wait thirty or sixty days. They're pretty much eliminated in ninety days, I think, so. It's up to y'all, y'all, what, that's really not, not my, my. We're either gonna pay for half the, for the month or you're just gonna let them have it, you know, have it earlier.
Usually, I mean, you go to work somewhere, you, and you start, not the trench, you get it right then.
Some places do, some places do, they have the waiting period. Some places they did, some days. So this is, this is what TMA has brought to, to us, so we can, we can have the three options. You can do the sixty days, the thirty days, or you can put them on immediately.
I would, I would be in more in favor of thirty days. Um, if someone's gonna wash out, they usually wash out in that period, right? But they start and they're not cutting it in thirty days, they're already gone.
Right, the way this is gonna be now, if they start in the middle of the month.
It would be.
They're gonna automatically be.
On the next month, right?
Yeah, they're.
Or we've been, or we have, or TMA have been not charging us for it. So they're just basically, they're gonna go, they're gonna make it retroactive or they're gonna charge for the month that they start.
Got it.
Okay. So if you do thirty days, or, or whatever you want, if they're thirty or sixty, then it's, you know.
But if you do thirty days, they're, and it's in the middle of the month.
They're gonna charge you for that month, yes.
What would y'all?
It's up to y'all, y'all wanna do the thirty or the sixty, pretty much.
So we got one thirty?
Or, or immediately, that's basically what it is.
We got thirty days, what would you like?
Thirty days? That's, that's what you're recommending, right?
I'm, I'm not, yeah. It's a cost thing where you guys need to decide if you want to pick up the cost of their health and then on immediately or you wanna do it. or you wanna do it, still make them wait the thirty days or the sixty days.
I thought, I'm comparing it right off the bat.
Well, I knew you had brought that up. So this is, I, TMA very rarely ever does something like this.
They never really don't, yeah?
They really have not, I've not seen it.
Well, then thirty days, if that's the standard, that's common practice.
That's fine. I mean.
Is your probation period for your boy?
I was gonna say immediate too, but then you brought up washing out and it wasn't.
Now, I worked for one city that, that was ninety days, and I was like, see, there was immediate. So this city is not that.
Right then. It may not be standard, but we're small, we have, I worked for companies for six months. We have to have really, you know, we have to really support employees.
Debbie, what did you say our city is? Ninety days, ninety days, ninety days from the best start.
That's, yeah.
That's typical.
That's wrong.
Somebody need to make motion.
Make a motion, or, I was gonna give, this is strong, you're simply, no, strong vote. Well, we got three here. Let's say thirty.
We have three for what?
Thirty days.
Three for thirty? Yeah, I'm fine with that.
May I have a motion to pass?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, change the waiting period for new hires to thirty days.
For healthcare insurance benefits with Texas Municipal League.
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
And, and we have to fill out this form and leave it with you?
Um, I, I mean, I, I mean, it's, you don't have to fill it out. I'm just gonna go back and send this to her tonight because it has to be in by March first. Um, so then, I mean, I can have the mayor sign it or I'll be out in Jamaica Beach. Or, of course, I, I mean, I sign most anything with the healthcare. I mean, I, I.
HR?
Yeah, I mean, HR, I can probably do that. Cause I, I enroll them and I terminate them, so I mean, I can probably sign this, you know.
Okay, next item, uh, for discussion, in discussion. Discussion only, no action will be taken is the parking on Bob Smith. I know we've had lots of, uh, input on that. Uh, I've had several citizens, some vote for it, some against it. It's, it's kinda all, all across the board. Uh, we're not voting on it tonight, may I remind you, but we, if we wanna address any concerns that y'all have or you've heard. Anyone?
Now, I, I, it's one of these things, I don't have a strong feeling about it, yes or no. But I would like though some more input from folks with.
Yeah, in the vicinity?
Folks in the vicinity, maybe we could get a, and I, I hate doing this to y'all because it's, it's seems trite, but I would really like to see a petition to see how many people want this. I, you know, I know, I know one for sure and I see a gentleman nodding his head. But I, I would like to know that the majority of the folks living in, in those blocks, that is something that they want.
And I'd like the, you know, input from the police chief. It's something, whether it's needed or if it's, uh, we can do partial or should it be the whole thing or, you know, what?
It's been my history when you do something like that, that you need to get input from everybody around here. Because not everybody around here may agree or they may all think that she brought up this even is perfect. But to go out there and just do it because a couple of people may have said it, no disrespect. I think you ask everybody just to make sure because I did stop a couple of people and they were like, well, when I have an overflow at my house, cause I read a report today where somebody got into disturbance about people parking out in the street, they got upset. So they like to park over there on that fence line where they got visitors coming over. So which one? So I, again, all my deal is, if you get a majority to say they want it, ladies spoke, you guys spoke. And I think you need to get input from somebody to go out there and do it. You don't want her to do it, you don't want me to do it cause we might not be fair. Get someone independent to go out there and do it and get their input on it as well. And make sure we share it with her so that she does.
And that's, that's the exact information I've shared with her, Russell's, uh, is in that we wanted to get everybody's input for sure.
At least within a four or five blocks of the effects, okay? And there may be a lot more people that agree with her.
Yeah, as I explained, I don't have a dog park. I live right there. So, but I, but I understand I wanna do what they think is necessary.
In all due respect, if we put up a no parking sign, I'll give you an example. Someone came to me and talking about no parking on the streets anymore in front of the bay houses. Are y'all okay with that?
No.
Eh, no. And I'm gonna tell you why. Somebody said, well, what we're saying is we don't want the rentals to be that way. We can't do an ordinance that says your rentals only. So when we did not do that for the rentals, when you have a party at your house, you know, you can't have those two cars out there. Now you're mad at me, is one of my guys. So see, it doesn't always mean the same to everybody. So, yeah, I just, I'm, don't get mad at me.
Just to get rid of all of them.
I'm just trying to be fair.
All no parking signs.
Okay, is anybody have any other input?
Yeah, I do. Um, we've been wrestling with this park, with these parking issues.
For six weeks.
Oh, ever since I, I was elected one year, eight months ago. Cause once you're elected in this spot, you really get involved, right? You can't dodge it. We've been fighting with these parking problems, especially with Bob Smith. I'd like us to keep talking about this because there should be a solution. I've thought about this. Maybe we have a limited time parking in certain areas only in there. Maybe we make a special park place for these guys to park where they could cross the fence and fish, but it would keep it clean that way. But it is a trash problem and we have these problems. So if someone can come up with a viable solution, it would be good for the community. Because it does get trash.
And that's, that's what we're trying to do by discussing.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I'm saying. And I don't think it's a matter of, oh, well, who wants to do not. That, that helps. But maybe we just come to a common sense way to mitigate the situation.
That's what we're trying to do.
Thanks, Ed.
On the other two thing?
I think we need more input from the people. We've got Kamen who's been advocate for this, but we need maybe have a tail home and open it up to more people.
That's a good way to do it.
Okay. Uh, next item, uh, discussion only, no action will be taken to consider making a dog park on the property adjacent to the city's wastewater treatment plant. I accepted this, you know, that we should get this on the, the agenda. We've discussed this for years, trying to figure out a good place for it. Uh, one thing we were talking about and, and are considering for that particular area. I'm not against a dog park whatsoever. I'm, I don't think this is the best location. I will listen to what everybody has to say because we've got some, we're trying to reserve that space to do a lot of, for emergency response teams, uh, from a, uh, getting their boats out of the water, lifts for them so they can be a much quicker response to get out to the bay. It's take, it takes considerably a lot longer. You know, the police are, are right now having to depend on a citizen to keep their boat in the water so it's ready to go. Um, so that's, that's what we're looking at. But the dog park, we have looked at for years and tried to figure out where to do that. The other issue we, we're gonna have is when to budget that. You know, right now we are tight on the budget. We are so tight. So that would be something that we could definitely be looking at for twenty twenty-four in, uh, budget. But I would definitely like to hear more about what Madre, our Madre has to say right now.
Yeah, I, in fact, I think it's like nine, ten months ago, you, you mentioned this to me in the hall over there. If you wanted to, to, working, I thought you said even with the Coast Guard. Something like that, that we would have a, make a, a regular boat lift, with a lift, a full pledge lift, you know, for a rescue boat and also a storage for fire equipment and stuff, with the building out there.
Yeah, emergency.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Like a regular building and emergency response team, storage for fire equipment, stuff like that. Um, that's expensive.
We're working on grant, that's one, it's taking so long.
Yeah. So here's the thing, um, you know, at, at our, I meet the candidates, um, event when, when we were there like, you know, the last, last election, there was a lot of talk about this. I thought it was a good idea then. I really think it's still a good idea. So that's why I'm proposing, I'm proposing here. I'm proposing that we use the city property at the waste treatment plant for the dog park. There's enough area for parking and a good sized dog park. The city of Galveston has several dog parks that are smaller than this. There's several of them that are smaller. Really make a great dog park. We, I think we can do this cost efficiently. And there's some things here for us. One of these things is really what, what takes is some site prep and some fencing. And I think if we can use hot tax money to do this, and this is a great test for what we can use hot tax money for, okay? I hear a lot of talk, a lot of people, what can we use it? You with me?
We use, we use hot money all the time for projects.
Thanks, right. So if we could use hot tax money, this would free up a hundred and seven thousand two hundred dollars. We have this property tax money, okay?
A hundred and seven thousand?
One hundred and seven thousand two hundred dollars. That's what's in our budget to, to fix that bulkhead down there.
So we don't have, you think we don't have to fix the bulkhead?
We do. I think we could use it for hot, hot tax money as part of site prep, okay? Free this other money up for you to use for these infrastructure problems. This is just my thinking, okay? And I think it's a, it makes sense from the funding.
But it, it's, we've got two issues that I would like to address though, and it's gonna be another, how many people around that area would like a dog park right there.
I understand.
And then the second thing is, have you priced up what insurance is for the city?
No, I haven't. No, I haven't.
Uh, it's been two years since we looked at that insurance, but it was astronomical.
I know. Every time.
So it's something we need to really.
They know, but one good guess, I think that amenities like, amenities like this make a community. This dog park, to me, somehow stands, well, I think to make a people should do. We should have things like this. We should have that deck of pickleboard thing too.
And like I said, it's all about budgetary.
I understand that.
Positions right now.
I think, well, let me tell you.
Order guys.
So anyway, um, what I was gonna say, we're early in the discussion. We're early in the discussion. I move that, that this discussion be tabled for the next council meeting, at which time I'll present a little concept plan to staff. And wherever it lands, it lands, okay? I just think it's a good thing for our community, all right? We have, sure, we have problems here. We have short-term problems. We also have, we also have families who live here. We have older people like me, okay? My kids come down here, they got dogs. They got big dogs. And they want to play with them to go run, things like that. And if we use hot tax money, I think it would be a real bad, and I think we can accommodate the vote too, all right? We got, but can you vote if, if we really work at it? Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the report is Mayor's report. I just wanna say, uh, we've been monitoring water and water usage here and, uh, what we do is basically when there's water, shoot down the ground, we know we need to fix it. Uh, pretty simple. We don't, I don't think we need to spend a lot of money on, on testing and measuring. We've got that already, that capability. Uh, we've, we have found several small leaks and we're getting those repaired. That's why our budget has went shot way too high, uh, for repairs. We're, we're looking at a lot of different things. Uh, we now have a gentleman that is very familiar with drains and getting, uh, federal funding and we're working on it. He's working on it, but he's also fielding. He's doing the daily responsibilities. It's a big responsibility and I wanna thank you for all the hard work you did. The process with Branch was followed as, as instructed. Uh, what we did is we, uh, council instructed Robert to, to go and negotiate with them. And today was about approving what he had negotiated with them. And again, thank you for doing that. Uh, I wanna thank, also thank the dedication team. Y'all make the place look great. We love what we're working with you guys. It's been a great positive experience and we love seeing you do what you do. Uh, I wanna thank Branch again. I, I know they brought it up and I had it on my list to talk about. And that was what y'all did at the drainage ditch, all the help you did to make it look as good as it, as it does now. Turning the water off and on during the holidays. I mean, taking away from your own family to get us out and bail us out when we need to most. I turned off a bunch. Russell turned off a bunch. We were out in full force helping customers do what they needed to get done. And helping out with the, uh, concrete labor on City Hall. It looks, it looks wonderful out there, guys. And, and we finally got, where we're not clipping it, nobody's clipping it with their wheels and, and, and you can actually pull a truck through there with, with somebody parking across there at the laundry mat. It was something that's been a pet peeve of mine for, for years. And we finally had the opportunity to get it done and it, and got it done. But thank you, thank you. We are on phase four now, are, are taking bids now. Uh, I was up here, um, um, when we were putting out four bids, for phase four. We've done through three of the phases. How many, how many more we got left?
Twelve.
Twelve, fourteen?
Fifteen of the phases.
Yeah. Fifteen, I mean, it's crazy how many we still got to go. So we've got a lot to go. Understand, this is something we figured was gonna happen and it is happening. As you start fixing things, the older stuff starts getting higher pressure, even though you're not increasing it from the tap or, or the meter, we're, we're paying galvastation on the water. It's increases pressure downstream, just the normal way it happens.
Most of those leaks.
Yeah, and so it's the older fin wall, fifty-year-old pipe and clamps and keys and valves. Yeah, it's, they're all popping. I, you know, we've, we're, we're working on a couple of solutions for that and, and, uh, we're not ready for that. We're trying to get some more things together, but we are, we are working on that solution. But we are moving forward. You know, that is a budgetary item. When you're spending two hundred, four hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars per phase, it's not something we can just say, oh yeah, go ahead and start. We have to make sure it's in the budget. You take away from other areas to make this happen and it is a slow process. I mean, we're looking at twelve, fourteen years before all of them get done. I, I don't find that acceptable. So we're looking at other alternatives to make this happen and, uh, it's gonna be a big commitment. But we, we, we are working on it. Uh, we're working on it nearly every day. Uh, other than that, I, I thank you everybody for coming out and seeing the process and how it goes. If anyone wants to visit, remember, I'm a phone call away. Staff is a phone call away. And all of our information is available on Facebook and on the website. Anytime you, you need any information. Other than that, I thank y'all for doing. I left a motion for meeting during.
Motion due at John.
Check.